This meeting in City Eureka Springs City Council coming to order. Clerk will call real please.
David Mitchell.
Oh, here.
John McLean.
Here.
Joyce Eller.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
Becky Schneider.
Here.
Lee Perkey Pyle.
Here.
We have six.
All right, thank you. Everybody please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Moved to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We do need to add number seven. I'm sorry, we need to add the Dog Park Grant Resolution to number seven under new business, or we can bring it up and place it somewhere before all the rest of them since Ms. Rachel's here. What do you call it? It is the Dog Park Grant Resolution, the resolution for the Dog Park Grant.
And there's somebody here to speak for that.
Yes, Ms. Rachel's here to speak on that. So whatever the council wants it is.
While we move it up to unfinished business.
I'll need a motion.
I make a motion that we move it up to the first thing under unfinished business.
Is there a second?
Second. Sounds reasonable.
You prefer discussion on it? Okay. Move it up to the new number one?
Number one or five?
After public comments?
Okay.
Yes.
However you want it, which one?
Yes, after public comments.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any other additions, deletions?
I move to move number six under new business, discussion of taxi certificate of public convenience and necessity up to the first in new business. We have...
How about number two since we already put her first?
Oh, no, she's an unfinished business, old business.
Oh, okay, you're pushing this up to unfinished?
No, I'm pushing it up to new.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
When we have people, I really think we need to do them first.
Okay.
Will they follow up the Dog Park? Would you be comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. What do you do with that?
I'll second his thing.
Let him restate it.
I move to move, my motion is to move number six, discussion of taxi service, to number two under unfinished business.
Okay.
Okay, number two is, I want to make sure that we got this right now. Number two as in under the resolution for the Dog Park Grant?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I seconded it.
Okay. Who else had their hand up?
That was me for that.
Okay. Any other changes, deletions? Okay. All in favor of the amended agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, amended change. Next will be approval of the minutes for January 28, 2013. Motion to discuss.
Second.
Before it's open, any changes, deletions, additions, corrections, any of the above? If not, all in favor of the agenda as it is, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Upstaying.
Okay. I'm sorry. Minutes for January 28, 2013.
That was for the minutes. You said agenda.
I'm sorry, it's minutes.
And who's upstaying?
I'm still stuck.
Thank you.
Okay, approved. Next will be commission committee authority reports and expired terms. Beverly's here for misplanning. Come on up.
It's just short this time because I have so many other things on your agenda, so I just want to let you know that we still need volunteers for the planning commission, so please turn in your applications for planning. And tomorrow at 5:00 we have a workshop for tree and landscaping ordinance, that's tomorrow at 5:00. Thanks.
Beverly question. I see Jim Morris has been expired since July and the Melissa Green position has recently come up for expiration. Do we have new applications for them to reapply to those, or what's going on with those two?
I believe that they will reapply. I will try to prod them a little harder.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
What about the CAPC? Has Bobby Foster applied to be reappointed?
None of these folks have came in and tried to renew their application yet.
They continue to sit as long as...
Yes, they do.
Till they're replaced. But they should, yeah, I agree, they should come in and fill out the application and...
We don't have anything under no CAPC reports unless there's somebody here in the hallway that I don't know about. Okay. Nothing at the hospital, nothing at the parks, nothing under HDC, and nothing in the cemetery as far as I know. That brings us straight into public comments. And, oh, we have several. Okay. First on the list is Mr. Glenn Brown. Hey Glenn, how are you?
Let me take care of this for you. Yeah, the average bigger. There you go. How's that? Working for you? Okay, go for it. As many of you know, I'm here representing Abundant Transportation. We have tried to get our city necessity license, and I've done some research, and Eureka Springs is known as the wedding capital of the South, which everybody knows. It's known for its many healing springs running throughout Victorian city. After 2010 census, it showed that there was 2,073 people that lived in the city limits of Eureka Springs. The city has 139 hotels with over 2,500 rooms for rent, making Eureka a tourist destination. It roughly offers 111 restaurants, 19 destinations for nightlife, most which are located here in the historic downtown Eureka area. It's known for its very diverse community and numerous art galleries, as well as many festivals and parades. It's also known for its domestic partner registry, which went into effect June 13, 2007. Abundant bought Eureka Springs Limousines from its previous owner in 2011. We continued to offer the famous $5 limo ride on Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights until April of 2012, when we shut down on our own accord because council stated that we were infringing upon Mr. White's business. With this in mind, we had to rework our business plan to recoup our investment by only renting our limos hourly with a two-hour minimum. We have filed all the paperwork several times trying to get the certificate of necessity from the city with no success. All we want is to be allowed to operate our taxis within the city limits legally, and I would hope that this council will allow this city run monopoly, will not allow this city run monopoly to continue. We need the transportation after the trolleys stop running at night. It's my hope Abundant Taxi will get the opportunity to operate a legal striped metered company to serve the people and tourists of this city.
No, public comment, we can't.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Ms. Catherine Zeller.
I know nothing.
There you are.
I'm innocent.
Sorry. Hey, get in here. Does that work for you?
That works. My name is Catherine Zeller, and I am a chef and owner of Cafe Amore up on the ridge. And one of the things that we talked about as a group was that we're not here to bash Fuzzy at all. I think that competition is a really good thing. To turn down another taxi company would be equivalent to saying we can only have one Italian restaurant in town, or we can only have one bar that can serve liquor in town, or God forbid, we can only have one kind of church in town. So we've had people that showed up in groups of 10 and 12 and 15 out of a limo to eat dinner at our restaurant, and we very much welcome that. They've had several cocktails amongst them, and we're happy to see them get back into that limo and go to their destination. We've had people that have had cocktails in our restaurant, and we've told them, "Call a cab, you can leave your car here, leave it parked in our parking lot for the night." So it's public safety also in that consideration. We just hope that you give abundant transportation opportunity to serve Eureka Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Mr. Cody Stussy. Okay.
It's nice that you've got somebody announcing that out there for you, too.
Yes, I do.
It's a little slow, though.
How you doing?
I'm doing well.
We'll have to work on that.
Dear council, mayor, and townspeople, we've been at this table before last year dealing with a lot of these same issues, and I'm working with James and some other people on this. I know that you've gotten emails, you've gotten letters, you've had people talk about the area and the transportation needs that are here. I'm here to speak a little more on the legalities of some of the issues. Currently, there's a talk about a franchise. That limits the number of company for a town this size does make sense, but according to the Arkansas State Supreme Court, that limit has to be more than one. This exact issue has actually happened in the past, and I did bring a copy of it if anybody wants it, which is just a copy of the Attorney General's opinion, as well as the Supreme Court ruling of the state of Arkansas, when this happened in North Little Rock, when a North Little Rock cab company applied and they turned them down, and then I've gone clear to the Supreme Court where the Supreme Court said, "No, that is a monopoly. You cannot allow just one." In my opinion, business only does its best when it has healthy competition. It pushes the product, pushes the service to a new level that you can't have when there's not competition. I'm not asking for a franchise, I'm not at all asking to be the only one, because I don't want to be. I'm just asking for a healthy chance to run a business that I'm passionate about in a city that I love. And that was all for me.
Thank you, sir.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Stussy.
Stussy, okay.
I've heard it many different ways.
I was in the ballpark.
It's all good.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bob Jazinski.
This one? Go ahead.
Greetings, Bob Jazinski, Angela Rose Hall, 46 Hillside Avenue. I was prompted to come here tonight by several things. Number one, there was a recent article with regard to the CAPC posted in the Eureka Springs Independent, and I'd just like to bring up some facts about the lack of support for weddings by the CAPC, or I shouldn't say lack of support, but the insufficient support by the CAPC for weddings in Eureka Springs. I'm coming here because this is the only public forum available to me to speak, especially in light of the fact that not one member of the current CAPC commission is a bed and breakfast owner or specializes in weddings, as does the Angela Rose Hall, which the bulk of its business is a result of bed and breakfast visitors and people coming to Eureka to get married. Well, last year, when my wife was applying for a position on the commission, I had the, you know, unmitigated gall to mention some facts to Mike Maloney as to the weddings being down in Eureka Springs. I gave him a printout from the clerk's office showing that weddings over the years have been steadily declining. In June, as a result of my presenting him with that information, I was attacked and labeled as a spreader of false rumors, as was my wife, for bringing up the fact that weddings were down. And in support of his attack on me that weddings were down, Mike Maloney pointed out that indeed weddings were not down, but in fact, they were up substantially up for the early part of the year. He obtained those figures from the clerk in June, and at the time he obtained the figures from the clerk, the clerk warned him that in fact, he shouldn't rely on the early figures because weddings were then headed south when he made his report to the CAPC. Now, as to set the record straight, weddings for 2012 were down from 2011. And I don't think people should be attacked when they try and point out facts. Another thing that got my attention was the fact that the CAPC is sending Karen Pryor all around the country to hand out brochures at motorcycle shows. I don't see any reason to send this woman, you know, to places like Charlotte, Cleveland, and now I understand Virginia Beach to hand out brochures, thousands of them, and according to the paper, she's already handed out 5,000 brochures at motorcycle shows. How about handing out those brochures at bridal shows, where I think they will do a lot more benefit to the city? And I prepared a synopsis of what I had to say here, because the three minutes doesn't allow me to present everything I have to say, but as I said, this is the only forum I have to speak on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lynn Sterling. Go ahead, announce yourself.
At 1:45 on Friday and Saturday nights, there are 19 people in 19 different bars all across town screaming, "You don't have to go home, but you can't stay here. We need more cabs." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Sarah Armalini. That's a better route for her. May have to pull it down a little more, I don't know.
The guy that was announcing out there, did...
Oh, no, it sounds great to me.
Well, did he disappear? I didn't hear him that time.
Hi, Sarah. Oh, no. What a motley-looking crew here.
I'm not Sarah Armalini, but Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, City Council members, my name is Gene Bland. This lady is Sarah Armalini. This gentleman is Stephen Sinclair. Sarah is the president of the Eureka Springs Historical Museum Board of Directors, and Stephen is our new director, and we're certainly glad and proud to have all of them. The Eureka Springs Historical Museum, it's your museum, and we want you to know some of the new things that are happening up at the museum, and Sarah has been very involved and has been very involved, very involved, in those renovations, and Stephen will explain to you how you can become a member and a volunteer. Hopefully, the renovations will help us display more of the collections that we have up at the museum, and in hopes that she'll come and visit up at the museum soon. Stephen will also have some membership forms if any of you all would like to become members in the future or tonight, be happy to do that. We are always looking for new volunteers, anybody to help, as the Board of Directors are strictly a volunteer organization, and I would like to publicly thank Sarah and Stephen for their work, and to thank all our current board members and all our members that we have. Right now, I have Sarah kind of explained what we've done up there and some of the things we're trying to make your museum better. Sarah?
I have a visual aid, I don't know where to put it, but this is a diagram of what we are doing down at the museum. We have been busy, I don't know if you've noticed, the windows have been papered over, been closed for a month and a half, we've been painting and redecorating and updating. Thanks to grants, donations, memberships, and fundraising events, we've been able to repair our roof, repair the damage caused by the leak in the roof on the second floor, and the ceilings and walls, repair our porches, and in the process, we created a really nice area to display our growing art collection. Now, first floor, we're doing complete renovation down there. We've added new interior walls. Point when I say that. New interior walls to create a self-guided walking tour through the museum. Way to go. We're going to have updated exhibits, we'll be using artifacts, text, and photographs to tell our story. We're going to have exhibits on the Native Americans, the Springs, our fires, architecture, people, buildings, music, nifty little postcard display, transportation and tourism, and we also are improving our visitor information area and adding a gift shop. Ta-da. Now, after the dust settles and the paint dries, we hope we'll be able to better tell the story of Eureka Springs and attract more visitors to town, and we'll have a nice big grand opening, and y'all can come down and see what we've done, and we appreciate all your support and interest. Thanks.
And you finally got your parking lot paved.
Yes, I forgot to say that parking lot paved and...
Just go ahead and tell me about it.
And if you don't know, Eureka Springs Historical Museum is in a partnership with Crystal Bridges this year, which means that more than 13,000 people will be seeing and learning about Eureka Springs Historical Museum every week, which means that some of those 13,000 people will be coming to Eureka Springs and visiting our museum and spending their money here. We are a nonprofit, which means the only way we get money is through grants, donations, and memberships. We have several levels of membership. Individuals, $25 a month, a year; families, $30 a year; small businesses, $50 a year; and then we go on up to $500 or more. We are also accepting sponsors for our new exhibits. Sponsors at $1,000 per exhibit will have a marker at each of those exhibits with your name on it, saying sponsored by so-and-so. So we appreciate you and appreciate your support. I'm going to pass these around, and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you, sir.
Here's some of blown-up Stephen's cards, if you would like to call him, phone number, and I hope you all know where the museum is. I feel like I didn't try it. And believe me, these folks have worked real hard, and we appreciate them, appreciate them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Congratulations, y'all. You have done a marvelous job.
Well, I hope you'll be pleased with what we ended up.
All right, and that will do it for our public comments. Next will be unfinished business. Next will be the Dog Park Grant Resolution. Motion to discuss.
Second.
Miss Rachel is here, and Miss Rachel, if you'd like to come up and go ahead and miss back to Diane, so you can even put your stuff. Just go ahead and announce yourself.
Hi, I'm Rachel Bricks, and I'm here on behalf of the Eureka Springs Dog Park Advisory Committee. Maybe most of you, if not all of you, have already heard about this important project that we're working on with the Parks Commission for the city. We are planning on putting the park at Harmon Park, and if you would like, I have a little map here, you're a good holder.
Yes, ma'am.
The park is going to be a majority of Harmon Park, actually. We're going to have a small dog area, a Long Grand Avenue, a large dog area, more on the interior, and eventually, we'd like to put an events area where we're going to partner with Good Shepherd Humane Society in having adoption events and fundraisers and things like that as well. So we're really excited about the project. We've been having meetings since August, we've been applying for some grants, we've been trying to garner as much community support as we can, and we've been having bimonthly meetings. I've also brought a proposal for you folks to read at your leisure, and I'd just like to pass one of those around to each of you. You're more than welcome to keep them and read them when you have time. It explains a lot more about the project that we're working on. And the reason that I'm here tonight is that Ms. Glenna Booth and I, she's been so wonderful and gracious in helping me, because I had never written grants before, so she's been very helpful, and we are working on right now a grant for the, excuse me, Arkansas Rural Development Grant, and as part of that grant, there are several things that they require us to do. One of the requirements is for council to have a resolution that, and I hope I'm not messing this up, but that allows, that gives us permission to apply for the grant. So what I'm here to ask you for tonight is your permission and your passage, I think, of the resolution to allow that we can apply for this grant.
Question?
Yes, sir.
You showed like part of, I'm just, this is a question about the setup.
Yeah.
You said small dog area. Oh.
Yes, it's on the back of here.
Okay, and that's along, small dog area along Grand Avenue, okay.
Yes.
That's cool, it's going to have like a fence around it?
Yes, there will be a fence enclosing the small dog area, a fence enclosing large dog area, that one fence across there, you'll see that separates the two, so just the smaller dogs, like usually it's 30 to 40 pounds and under, and then the large dog area would be all of the bigger dogs, and then the events area, I mean, my hope is that we even have like dog birthday parties and weddings and stuff there someday, you know, it would just be really cool and really Eureka, so.
So how tall is that fence? I was just curious.
It's going to be five feet finished.
Five feet, okay. What type?
What's that?
What type of fence?
We actually haven't completely decided that yet. We've been looking at three different options. We've got like a Benner's, which is a wire-coated vinyl fencing. We're looking at chain link fencing, which HDC has approved those two, and also maybe like a wooden fencing. We're doing part of it in wood.
What part?
If you see the dotted line on the back of the map where the playground is, there's already some wooden, wo-ting, wooden fencing there, and where that dotted line continues all the way across, Park says donating the materials to finish that fence, and we'll have to install it. Yes, sir?
Is it restricting the usage of that part of Harmon Park for picnicking or anything else? Are there tables there? I don't remember, I mean, I drive by there all the time, but...
There are other areas for picnicking there at Harmon Park, including the playground and just to the, and I'm really bad with directions, but I think it would be the west of the playground, there's a picnicking area there, and then over by the skate park, I believe there are some, a bunch of picnic tables and things like that there as well. And then over to the, if you're looking at the map, over to the right of the restrooms, I guess I would say, up more toward the writer's colony, there's area there as well. It primarily is dedicated, my understanding is, is that that area's just been kind of not being, hasn't been used for a really long time, and this had been in their master plan for a while, but they didn't really have anybody kind of going through and getting a committee together to do it, so we're hoping this time it's going to rock and roll, and we're going to have a dog park. Yes, sir?
I attended one of Rachel's first meetings and got the opportunity to go with her committee out to this park area and walk it with Bruce Levine and everything, and this area is truthfully not utilized by the public at all. This would be an excellent use of space in the park that is just not used now, except to collect leaves.
The grade of it, if I may continue on what you're saying, and thank you for pointing that out, the grade of it is fairly steep, especially where the small dog area is really actually pretty flat, but the large dog area is kind of on an incline, and it's difficult for folks to conduct really any, much of any activities there. Dogs would be good to run around there.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
City Attorney, did you write this resolution?
No, but I've seen it.
Okay, thank you.
Any further? Okay, I guess now we need to...
I'd like to make a motion to approve this, well, to sign a resolution number and approve a resolution of the City of Eureka Springs authorizing the mayor to apply for a grant on behalf of Eureka Springs Parks and Reparation Commission to fund construction of a dog park in Harmon Park.
Is there a second?
I mean, second.
Second, and you need for a discussion on it? Mr. McLean.
What size of grant are you trying to procure?
$15,000.
$15,000. And is there someone, an organization directly that you're applying to for that? Is that, or just...
It's a grant offered by the state.
By the state?
Yes.
Oh, the rural community grant, okay.
Yes, sir.
I see that there. Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, motion in...
I do have one other question. And in the event you don't get the grant, what happens?
We're still just trying to do grassroots fundraising. We've got some other fundraisers planned, and we've actually, that packet that I passed out to you is our proposal that we've been using to solicit funds from other folks in the community and individuals as well, and we've got some fundraisers that we're working on, and other grants, hopefully. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. She'll find out what number it is.
The number will be 614. And when motions are made, if we just refer to it as the resolution... And when motions are made, if we just refer to it as the resolution, then that also works. We don't really have to read the whole thing, but, okay, this is a resolution 614, a resolution of the City of Eureka Springs authorizing the mayor to apply for a grant on behalf of the Eureka Springs Park and Parks and Recreation Commission to help fund construction of a dog park in Harmon Park. Whereas, the Eureka Springs City Council has determined that the, that the Eureka Springs Parks and Recreation Commission, a division of the City of Eureka Springs, meets eligibility requirements necessary to apply for a grant under the Arkansas Rural Community Grant Programs, and whereas the Eureka Springs Dog Park Advisory Committee has presented plans for a dog park, and whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs recognizes the need for the project, concurs with its importance, and supports the Parks and Recreation Commission in its efforts to proceed with the same, and whereas the Eureka Springs Dog Park Advisory Committee has acknowledged that they must raise $13,500 through community cash and/or in-kind donations to be applied to the project as a local match. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of Eureka Springs is hereby authorized to submit an application, a formal request, to the Arkansas Rural Development Commission for purposes of securing state grant funds in the amount of $13,500 to aid and assist the Eureka Springs Parks and Recreation Commission Dog Park Advisory Committee in executing the proposed project described herein, and that the mayor of Eureka Springs is further authorized to administer the grant funds for the same project.
Just one correction on the word "authorizing" in the, in the title. Just need to correct spelling on that one. Oh, I just got the wrong correction. Okay. I don't know how I did that, but I'll fix mine. Never mind. Okay. It's okay. That will take care of that. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, folks, very much for your time and for moving me up on your agenda. I really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Rachel. All right. Next will be the discussion taxi franchise slash certificate, public convenience and necessity. Move to discuss?
Still moved. Second.
Laid in second, and floor is open. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, the reason I brought this forward was that several of us received requests for a application for another taxi service in the City of Eureka Springs. And so, I suggested that we bring this to the table to discuss. My understanding of this issue is that it goes back a few years, several years, and that Sid Clark has provided me with some documentation, which was video documentation, going back to 2006 meeting, around that era, several meetings, wherein it appears that currently what we have in our books under this particular issue, we have a pretty simple code for taxi cabs, Chapter 4.32.
Page?
That is page 92. And all it says there is that anybody can come forward and request from the city council a certificate of public convenience and necessity authorizing such a business and operation. So, you know, the only other stipulations are that, you know, the, if it's approved, then that person has to have a license and has to post routes and a few other things. Evidently, there's some history behind this. There's, I have seen a copy of a previous ordinance, which is 4.24, which currently in our codebook is for mopeds. But evidently, at one time, it existed in this municipal codebook, and it described a taxi franchise. So, at this point in time, it's a little confusing to me as to where we stand on this. I mean, this is the code here, the current code, and it appears to me that all the city can do is, the council, this council, is to operate under the current code. However, looking back at that 2006 meetings, there was some legal counsel involved at the time that recommended referring back to the state authorizing code in the, in the state handbook. So, and I know that you were here at that time on that, that particular council.
Was I?
Yes, sir. I have video evidence.
I believe I was. Okay. I'll on up to that.
So, this has gotten to be in kind of an interesting issue, and I think we've got two things. I mean, the, the state law basically says that if somebody wants to come apply to bring a taxi service into town, we have to have a public hearing, and we have to have due process to any other taxi service providers as part of that. So, that's part of what I think will come out of this tonight, is that we probably will have to establish a hearing or have a hearing established, you know, set up a date for it, and give the other taxi, or the current taxi service provider due notification. I'd like to, I'll quit, I'll stop my comments here. I'm struggling a little bit with this because evidently, it's a big can of worms, and I don't think we're gonna solve anything tonight, but we need to open up the dialogue. And I think we have both of the parties here, present here, and Mr. Mayor, would it be, I mean, can we ask them to come up and state their case at this?
You can do whatever you want to do.
Then I'd like, I'd like both parties to, to be able to do that, if we could.
Who would you like to hear first?
Which one of you would like to go first? Well...
Okay, Mr. McCollum. Well, I, you know, I think, I think we need to look at it as it's outlined by the state and follow it that way, you know, that the app, it has to be applied for according to those guidelines, and so I think we need to, for our protection, yeah, it's, you know, we just need to follow it, follow it by the, by the way it's laid out.
But that doesn't preclude us from having a discussion here at this time.
No, but, but it, but it also, you know, there, he has to provide, or the other service has to provide it, you know, a list of needs, and, and it has a certain criteria, so I think that, that I think that we should have that in, in a, in a formal application and instead of hearing. And I think that's, to me, that's the way it ought to go. Just my own personal thoughts. Mr. Nader?
Okay, I'm thoroughly confused. What did the franchise, the moped franchise have to do with this?
I believe there was a period of time, correct me if I'm wrong, Joyce, I think you, you were involved in this, there was some codification going on, or there was some cleaning up of the codebook, and whatever was in the code at that time that had not received official codification, I think was taken out. Is that correct? And, and apparently, this particular code for a taxi franchise, 4.24, was taken out, which freed it up at a later date for the moped franchise, something like that.
No, not, not quite. In the 2005 codification, there really wasn't a taxi franchise in the book then. Somehow or other, this thing has been in limbo for a long time, but what happened when the municipal league codified the, the book in 2005, and it was past the first, my first year on the city council, they wrote an ordinance that we were supposed to use to accept the codification, which said, and this is no longer in the codebook, it disappeared after 2010, but it said that every ordinance not herein included was thereby canceled, rescinded. Okay, so what we did essentially was rescind every ordinance that was in the codebook at that time, and that included not only taxi cabs, but zoning regulations and everything else. It was a mess, and the municipal league admitted that it was a mess. Van Tungan was here, and he read that, and he said, yes, that's what it says, and it's a mess, and I can guarantee you, you will never, ever again see this ordinance in a codification. And that was the end of it. So, what has happened, most of those ordinance were rescinded, however, there is a state law, and, and researched this, that you can't rescind a franchise with a rescission ordinance. It has to be a special ordinance, and it has to state that the franchise is no longer working, or that the person's not fulfilling, and that sort of thing. Okay, it'll be okay in a minute. So, that ordinance is in limbo, but nevertheless, that doesn't have anything to do with Mr. Stussy. He is trying to follow the laws it is in our books. Now, this certificate of necessity, this is a really, really gray area. This Chapter 4.32 was not in the codebook when I was on the city council in 2010. It has somehow appeared since then, and there apparently are no records of any minutes. It didn't come before the city council. It wasn't an ordinance. It just somehow or other appeared. And this man has gone through a great deal of expense and trouble trying to get just simply a business license to do business in Eureka Springs, and since we don't have a certificate of necessity, and we never have had one, I don't know how to go forward in this. I would like to see this man tonight have permission to do business. This is ridiculous that we are denying this man the opportunity to do business in Eureka Springs. I've had a lot of email from local business owners on this. They all agree that we definitely do need an organized, legitimately-run taxi cab business, one that publishes its rates, one that you can get on the phone, one that will show up, one that is professionally run. Now, I'm not making any statements about what we have at this point in time, but here is a man who in good faith wants to have a business in this town. He has jumped through all the hoops. He has even complied with this ordinance, and whether it's an ordinance or not, I'm not exactly sure, but he's done everything that's required of him, and our season is upon us, and I just, I would like to find a way to go forth legally to give him permission to do this business. I don't think it matters if we have two taxi cab companies. They'll just be in competition with each other, and the one that's the most efficient is going to survive. But I don't see that we can prevent this man from doing business in town, and quite frankly, this, the term "certificate of necessity" really sticks in my craw. I researched the origin of this thing. It goes way, way back in Arkansas law, back to Title 23 Public Utilities and Regulated Industries, and all it says is that a certificate of public convenience and necessity should be issued by the Arkansas Transportation Board, herein abolished, and that's the end of it. Now, we don't have a transportation board. The authority for issuing this certificate wasn't apparently transferred to anybody else, and I'll tell you, any lawyer that does business in Arkansas, my hat is off to them. I don't see how you have the patience to do this, but this man is kind of caught between a rock and a hard place, our own ineptness and our own laws, and we're preventing him from doing business, and the season is upon us, and we need him. So, I don't know what we do about this. Mr. Weaver, do you have any suggestions?
Do you want to let the others? See what they...
Reading the law on taxi cabs, it doesn't say anywhere we have to have a public hearing. It doesn't say we have to do anything other than he needs to get our permission, basically is what this simply comes down to.
Yes.
Mr. Stussy needs the council's permission. A certificate of public convenience and necessity authorizing such a business is basically us saying yes. Correct, Mr. Attorney?
The rest of your table, then I'll try to share my thoughts.
But what I'm saying is, there's nothing else in here postponing, delaying, or anything else. It seems to be very simple, the way it's in our book now, and if it's in our book wrong, we need to take that up later.
Mr. Mr.
Ditto to what Alderman Sellers said. I've had multiple, multiple people come up to me about wanting the opportunity to have another taxi service over a long period of time, and I defer to the city attorney with the question, how can we handle bringing on a second cab company in this town at the table tonight?
And Mr. Perkypaw.
We are required to have a hearing on application, 14-57-307. Upon the filing of an application, the city shall cause to be given to each and every taxi cab operator in the city a due and reasonable notice in writing. Notice of the hearing shall be set, or shall set forth the time and place of the hearing. The hearing shall be conducted by the governing body of the city for all persons interested in or affected by the application.
Okay, is that the state law?
That is state law.
And what was that number?
It's 14-57-307.
Okay, thank you.
Any further from the table? We'll not let Mr. Weaver run with it. Mr. Weaver?
Not to pile more mud on the situation, but honestly, whether or not our codebook is current is not something that I want to tell you an answer to, because what you were talking about when it was codified, state law also says if you codify your ordinances, the ordinances themselves are still the law, not the codification. So, whatever is in your book, if it doesn't match what's recorded with the clerk, it's not the law. The ordinances is the law. So, until you know from the clerk exactly which ordinances are in existence, you're not sure what you've got in the codebook at this point on this particular issue is correct, because the codebook has been wangled back and forth on this issue, and probably had something to do with the fact that there was an ordinance passed, and then it was, took up, and cast down by the people when they didn't accept it. It was referendumed. And so, when the code service put the books together, I think they did a very poor job on this one particular section. And so, you really, before you act, need to know what is recorded in your clerk's office, and that may mean that the clerk may have to go back through several ordinances, but they should be indexed, hopefully, in a manner that she can pull out the particular ordinances. The certificate that you're talking about, I think, is what would be the first step if you want to allow another taxi service in town. They need to make their application, and then you need to, as you said, hold a hearing. And if you find there's a need for another taxi, whether or not our ordinances go back and show we need a franchise or not, you've got to get the certificate. And then you would have the hearing, and then if you have to have a franchise, the certificate is the first step when you get in a franchise. If you don't need a franchise, you need, you still need the certificate. So, they need to make an application while the clerk looks into where, whether we use, still use the term franchise legally or not, and if it's not been repealed by a proper ordinance, then even though that section is not in our codebook now, it probably should be.
Question to the attorney again?
Yes, sir.
Where's the application for certificate of necessity at, so that this gentleman can have a copy of it started?
I don't know that there is an actual application, and there typically isn't on something like this. It's a, it's a document that's typically drafted by that individual to show the, the needs that are listed in the code. I mean, there are certain things he has to show, that there's, there's sufficient business.
Okay. Okay.
And he would make a written application, but as far as an actual application form, there's not typically one, because it's not something that comes up on a regular basis. It's very much similar to a utility application. Our utilities are franchised in town, but we don't have an application laying in the clerk's office, because Carroll Electric and Sweptoke are, they've been around forever. They have, one has one side of town, one has the other side of town, and they're, they're under franchise agreement. The cable company's the same way.
So it's like a business proposal, he says?
It's more of a business proposal at this point.
I understand.
Mr. Perkypal, hand your hand up.
Well, isn't this proposal that he, this pamphlet he just brought forward, isn't that a business proposal?
It may meet the definition, and if the council looks at it, the council may decide that. That would be an issue the council could debate if there was a public hearing.
Well, the application has to have the qualifications of the firm, and it has to state as facts the necessity for the particular service, for the taxi service. So that's what that would have to have in it.
It does? Because that's what's on that page right there.
Yeah.
Everything is here. So we have.
So could that be considered, my question is, it appears to me that this could be considered to be the application.
If it meets the needs of what's listed in the code, it certainly could be.
I mean, let's face it, it's being discussed, so, you know, he's, he is applying, otherwise it wouldn't be at the table. So in, in addition to that, with the information he's provided with this, I make a motion that we accept this as his application, so we can move on with the process.
I'll second. Yeah. You probably should ask him if he wants that, or if he would like to present something in addition to that as application, because he's the one making the application, he's going to have to stand and live by his application. If he makes an application and you decide it's insufficient at some point in the future, that he's going to have to live by what he's, what he's presenting. So if he has additional information besides this, he needs to tell you that, so that you, you know what he's calling his application.
Mr. Perkypal.
Well, if, if we deemed it to be insufficient, he could come back and, and rectify that, just reapply.
Depends on how you find it deficient. If you find it deficient in that there's not a need, he would not be able to reapply based for a time period.
Can I follow up on that? Define need. We need a definition of need and necessity. That is, that is the whole key right here.
That is, that is a finding that you're going to have to make as a finding of fact, that there is actual business out there that is not being taken care of, and to, if that is a sufficient amount to provide, to require an additional service.
Mr. McCollum.
If, you know, if we, if we knew that there was, if, if the state had, had deemed it necessary or unnecessary to have a hearing, because you can determine the need prior to that, then they would have asked for it. So the public hearing, I think, would be a big part in the process of defining the need. So that's, that's the way it goes.
Okay, so we have public hearings all the time, and they're usually like the fifteen minutes before a council meeting, like we have public hearings for public transit and all that sort of thing. And according to Arkansas twenty-three thirteen dash two twenty, which is not in the municipal league code book, but does deal, I might say on and on and on with transportation, because I actually got the patience to read this thing. It says here that a certificate should be issued to any qualified applicant if fit, willing, and able to perform the service, hearing at least twenty days after the service of notice to interested parties of its time and place. In other words, he has already determined, he has demonstrated with his brochure, that he is ready, willing, and able. He has the funding to do it, and this is actually a really complete business plan. I mean, I was impressed with this plan. And the truth of the matter is that we have not had a taxi service that has operated within even the sparse laws that we've had in this town for the last twenty years. I mean, we make such things as you have to post your rates and all that sort of thing, and we have never, we've never, we've never forced the other taxi driver to comply with this, because he never had anybody who wanted to have a proper taxi service, so we didn't bother with it, we just ignored it. But this man is really ready, willing, and able to do this, and as for demonstrating the need, we could fill this room with local businesspeople who are willing to testify that we absolutely, positively need a taxi service right this minute. I mean, some of the stuff, some of the emails I've gotten, horror stories of things that have gone on, which I consider confidential, I'm not going to mention names, but it's just impossible to get transportation in this town after a certain hour. It can't be done, and people are stranded. I got an email just today from a constituent giving me this long horror story about people that were stranded, he couldn't find any transportation for them. Well, some of these people had to walk from downtown to get back to their motel, and if there's just, there's a need, and I don't think we would have any trouble establishing a need if we had a public hearing. So how do we proceed to get this man, and I, you know, clearly, I'm in favor of a taxi service, a real one. So how, what do we do to expedite this? How do we get going on this so that it happens soon, because we have a season upon us?
Mr. DeVito.
Based, based on, on the comments of the city attorney relating to certificate of necessity, I'm looking at city of Eureka Springs certificate of necessity application, the applicant's name, address, phone number, any unpaid judgments against them, experience of stockholders and management, fleet information. I would accept, I would move that we accept this as the certificate of necessity for abundant taxi.
Mr. Snyder, you had your hand up.
I'd like a second on that.
I'll second.
There's, there's already.
Yeah, I was going to say I'd second, but I think we already have our first and second going. Okay, I, this most definitely is a business proposal. It's a business prospectus. It's, it's, everything you need is in there. So what you're saying is, we do have to have a public hearing according to state, what you're saying is, we do have to have a public hearing according to state law. Okay, and that's, is that the two-week notice or the four?
It didn't say, it just said written notice to any existing.
Two weeks on a public notice? I don't remember.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, on this particular one, it requires twenty days minimum, from notice to your existing.
That's what this old legislation in the original book says.
I think it still requires twenty, twenty days from notice to the other.
So if we decide today that we're going to have the public hearing, instead of setting it for the next meeting, it would have to be the following one, the first one.
If you're going to use your meeting day, yes.
For the public hearing. Okay. So if we do that, and we all agree that this is a business proposal.
You need, you need to hear that from your applicant. If he's truly an applicant.
Is this a business proposal? Yes or no?
Yes, what I did is, since there wasn't one, I'd send a letter and emails a year ago requesting for an application, and I was told there isn't one. There is one, city of Fayetteville, city of Springdale, at the airport, everybody else has an application. I took theirs and made my own.
Okay, so this is your business proposal.
Basically, this is what I did. This is their application. This is all their application is, are these two pages right here. The rest of it is my business proposal, my plan, what I want to bring to this city.
Okay, so we have a business proposal, we can schedule a public hearing. In the meantime, we have been hearing for weeks and weeks, just, just us at this table, have been hearing for weeks and weeks on people downtown who know we need additional taxi service. I personally can say, from having worked right across the street for twelve years, weekend nights, there's a definite need for additional service, whether it's limos and other taxi, we need additional. And nothing against you, Fuzzy, we need additional. We have that many people downtown, late at night, like I said, I'm there Saturday nights, midnight, one o'clock, and I see what we need. So if we have a proposal, we have a public hearing, when they're done, we then discuss, and do we decide right then? Yes or no?
You can, I believe. After your public hearing, you can hold a meeting, and you can vote to approve or disapprove. Now, whether that gets him the right to operate or not is, goes back to whether the clerk can find the actual ordinances that have been or not been overturned.
Well, that was the next part of my question. Didn't you say, Ann, that you were looking through, that it was a nightmare looking through, but you had been digging through all of the past ordinances on this?
I don't think I used the term nightmare. There's quite a collection of minutes ordinances, the recording from four meetings in two thousand and six with Kent Crowe representing David White, and by the time the public hearing is held, it could all be compiled, so each of you could see what documentation is available for you to review.